...with themselves is, I feel like I'm not being fairly compensated in Fairfax.
May I, Michael, can you remind me for a second, the old BA lanes, was it to step 23?
It was, and going back, you could actually find it down to step 20, there was additional steps added in those years where they were frozen.
But the old one is that, so, here's what, here's what I think is happening. We have a wonderful way, and I'm still learning, how can we simplify things that should just be uber simple? Right? And, and yet, and, and maybe it's us, sometimes, maybe it's us together, we keep layering. When I arrived, a market study had already been completed, some people were below, and we wanted to get them to market, and some were above. The issue apparently, to me, what was clear is whatever communication about who was above and how that would be affected didn't happen, and people were very upset. That somehow they were now going to be left out of getting, on the new scale, they were going to be left out. So Marty and the team worked with the associations, and now, with your support, we looked at doing bonuses, no, we looked at doing a couple more steps on the old scale. Looked at on the new, looked at on the old scale, where are you going to make the most money? On the new BA market scale or on the old one? We found at step 11, that's the magic, at step 11, stay on the, stay on the old, and you'll be a winner. If you're younger than that, you're newer, you need to go on the new BA, and you'll be the winner. Okay? You'll, you'll make the most money on that. So I think we've solved that problem, the step 11 solves that. Here's the other part, this is where I think we're turning our wheels. We've got people even under the old grandfathered scale, they're at the end, now what? Now what? What are we going to do? We have people at the end of all of our scales, now what? What do we do with them? Whether they're over-market, under-market, are we giving them bonuses, are we going to keep giving them MSAs? The one idea you've got today is, we can give everybody on that old BA scale, continue to give them MSAs, in effect, give them some kind of a mini-step for the rest of their career. There is 100 and, or 200 on the very last step, but next year, the people who were on 22 will be on 23, and whatever you just did for 23, some of them are going to be like, "I'm at the end now, what are you going to do for me?" Right? So that's what you're going to get caught up in policy-wise. How do you decide where to stop it? What we've really done here, and again, this is the staff's best thinking, so we're not caught in that, like you only treated this one group with a, a deal, is everybody on this grandfathered still gets the MSA, or a .5 MSA. So I think we've solved one thing, which scale's the better deal for you? We did that calculation, teacher associations, I mean, they'll speak for themselves, but they buy that. This other thing is, what about the people still on the old scale that are at the end of the scale? What do we want to do with them? How do we want to treat them? And how do we want to treat the next-year group that gets to that end? Right? Because if, if it's frozen, you'll get more and more people on that 23, do they just sit there over now? But that's true almost on any of our scales, how many, we have people on the end of all of our scales. Masters, masters plus 30, PhD, what do we want to do with folks at the end of the line on any of our scales? And I think that's a separate policy question from this other piece. I, I mean, honestly, I feel like you all together, step 11, winner, no problem. The other issue is, how do we deal with people when they get to the end? We're thinking about this BA group, because that's the one of the moment that has us engaged, but what we do for them really is going to affect how we would handle anyone at the end of the line for their salary scale. Now Marty, if I've said something wrong, you know me, as long as you've known me, please say, Scott, you're wrong, or kind of wrong, or is that a pretty good summary?
No, no, you're, you're, you're exactly right, so we would provide an MSA for all of our employees, once they get to the top of the, the scale. And that, of course, is the board's decision to provide an MSA, the board could choose to do nothing, the board could provide an MSA, the board could provide a bonus, that's for all employees. What we've done with this particular option here is that we are treating the grandfathered teachers as we would treat our non-grandfathered scales. That you would be at the top of your particular step, which is step 23, and then you would receive the same MSA as all other employees. And so it, it's essentially treating them as all other employees in the system. So this is why we brought this option, it was a clean option, it was a, a simple option. Not a lot of moving parts, no multiple steps, no multiple scales, not having to look at, you know, each individual's progression as you go through a particular scale. It's providing an MSA to all of our employees, and we would do that until they leave the system. And, and so that's, that's the option that we're presenting here to you. The cost is $57.5 million, that's the overall cost.
In 19 years?
In 19 years, the previous costs were $40 million over that same period of time for the, the previous solution, going back to the 11. You can see the, the overall costs there were $40 million, so it's an additional 57.5 if you were to give an MSA. The MSA is not a bonus, the MSA is part of your base salary, the MSA gives you retirement credit. And the MSA treats you as we would treat all of our other employees who get to the top of the scale.
Right, so Dr. Brabran, the point of not making this complicated is, it's just simply saying, when our teachers hit the, the end cap of where their step is, they'll, they'll get an MSA like any other employee who has hit the, the cap on their scale. Because we have lots of different scales, it's not just teachers, it's administrative, so I guess where I'm trying to understand is, why is this even being stated? Isn't this our common practice? And if it's not the common practice, then why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we've always done that if that's what we do for the non-teachers?
So what we were saying is that those individuals who are in the yellow portion, or the grandfathered portion of the scale, those teachers were above-market. So as we developed the new scales, we had the market average of 95 to 105% for your lifetime earnings. And these individuals in the yellow portion were above-market, and so we, we stopped them, we grandfathered them so that they would make no more money, because they were currently above-market. And so the board asked us to, that wasn't acceptable, and so we brought back another option of providing some additional dollars for those individuals who are already above-market. But wanting to give the board that option of providing them an MSA for their career so that they would continue to receive some kind of salary increase.
I, I think where maybe this is all getting muddled up is that the point that, why corporations, public or private, and, and any business looks at doing, doing an MSA or a COLA is because even if you never give a raise for a position, the economy changes over time, and with inflation, if you don't do a COLA or an MSA, people are going to be working for less money the next year, and the next year after that. So to me, it seems like, as long as we follow the market on COLAs and MSAs, or whatever you want to call it, for a cost of living adjustment, then that, that's what we owe every single employee in this organization. And maybe that's how we can stop making some of this so complicated, because we're, we're just focusing in on our teacher scale only. And my, I mean, Mr. Smith, I think I was following you, but the bottom line is, it is about, it just goes to my opening remarks, it's about equity. And whatever the county ends up doing for cost of living adjustments, we need to be mirroring that to the very best of our ability.
The, the policy question, Megan, is, I think, just, and Marty, and Lee, stop me if I'm saying it wrong, because we want to create that space. We made a decision with the market study that if you were over-market and you got to the end of the scale, you weren't going to get additional dollars. That's the bottom line. Now, it's, do you want to revisit that and say, because yours is, as far as equity in this organization, even if you're over-market, you've still been with us a long time, we value you, and we're going to give you a market scale adjustment as we would others whose salaries may still be either at the market or below the market, so that, that's the-
I appreciate that, Dr. Brabran.
That's the nugget, I think.
And, and, and I would say that because we're told that this FY '20 budget that we're about to work on will make us just about reach being whole, then let's move forward, which is, even these people who are quote, "above-market", well, we've, we've brought everything to market now, so if you're a little bit above it, the bottom line is, you're going to be working for less unless we do something about a COLA each year.
And for those teachers who are, who are, would be above-market, and in addition to making them whole, they would continue to receive those extra dollars. Even when those employees who were below-market wouldn't be receiving those same increases over time. So that is a way of also making the teachers in this yellow area whole, because they would be above-market and still making the same MSA as other employees.
I know this is complicated, guys, but we did make that decision. Dr. Brabran, thank you for restating, and I think you'll probably continue after restating what our decision was, and where we need to go, and, and what you said, Marty, you know, that's, that's important for us to know too. And I also, with our two teachers' representatives here today, I, I do think you, you know, as the, this conversation, remember, we're not making a decision. This work session is the way a work session should go, lots of questions, lots of conversation. And again, just as Ms. McLaughlin encouraged you to reach out to us, so we, we truly understand individually where you are, and we can talk to you about our own individual, perhaps ideas, concerns, and staff recommendations as well. So with that, I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, and Ms. Strauss.
What's amazing is, is when you haven't looked at the follow-on notes before we get to here, and you find out how consistent you are. Because I wrote down, where is the marginal distribution curve or histogram, and it was answered in one of my questions, sort of. And that's actually the part that I would like us to potentially focus on, so for anybody who's looking, it's the attachment, work session BA lanes, next steps, if we can bring up that, actually, I would appreciate it. It's on the first page, number 127, which is the data points, it's not exactly how I would have wanted it, because that's not really a marginal-
Just pause for a moment to let everybody find it.
That's okay, I'm just talking, you'll, you'll catch up when the, you know, for the visual learner joke, you'll get it when you see it. So it's, it's who, you know, what, on the chart that was just given to us, we don't see the distribution of the employees. So who is where on that chart, and this is what's crucial. And unfortunately, it's not calculated, but that's okay, because while I was waiting patiently, I did it for you. So the gray and yellow bars total 868 employees, and the purple bars total 1,842 employees. So 32%, so basically a third are in this category of, you know, a potential solution, which is the 57.5 million, but I have questions about that. Because, you know, we said, you said you ran the numbers, and 11 was where it broke. But on the, I'm, I'm trying to honor the difference of, of what was intended originally versus maybe what we were told, and not understanding the consequences of really the plan that was rolled out. And the difference between trying to honor experienced teachers versus just make everybody whole. And I feel like 11 is 11 years of step 11, because they're roughly equivalent, although it could not be equivalent because of missed steps, is that correct? That 11 doesn't necessarily equal years, but, but it's roughly. It's the question of somebody who's been here for 18 or 20 years, all of a sudden being cut out. And somebody at 11, which is roughly, I mean, you're, I don't even know if you're quite mid-career at 11. And a, a lot of the notion that has driven this conversation from the very beginning, and I don't even know how many superintendents or interim superintendents back I go, is, you know, this notion of these fleeing teachers to other jurisdictions, which, to some degree, I think, is a myth, or a fable, or a, maybe it's a parable, I don't know what it is, because it's never been presented to us. We've never had a report said, "This many teachers fled Fairfax County Public Schools for a surrounding wavy jurisdiction in order to get more money." I mean, we knew intuitively we were struggling to fill some of the ranks, especially at the beginning of the year, when we had vacancy rates that were much higher. But we aren't there yet. We aren't there to a point where somebody has produced any document to us that has said, "You're losing these teachers to these jurisdictions at this point in their, in their career, because they're getting paid more money." You know, do we lose teachers that we wanted to lose? Sometimes you want to lose a teacher. Are we losing valued teachers? I don't know, I don't have a report that says that. What I do know is, is that the, the, the feeling, and sometimes that is important to concentrate on, the feeling that our previous action disrespected some of our most senior teachers and treated them disparately, just because they were senior teachers, and they hadn't previously gotten an MA. Now, the problem was, is that when they started their career, we had a tuition reimbursement. So the message was, if you, if you do your career, and you get to a point where you want to do your MA, we've got a tuition reimbursement, you can go do it, and this will be your, your pay plan. The problem was, is that in the meantime, we got rid of the tuition reimbursement, and we didn't change the plan, and then all of a sudden, we said, "Oh, by the way, you never went and did the thing that you could have done when we have the tuition reimbursement, and then we got rid of it, and so now we're going to punish you." That's, that's the problem with the message being put into action. I'm not entirely sure that we're ramping this all the way back to somebody who is in their 11th year of teaching with us is, is what is equitable. I mean, I, I don't know if that, if we're on the right message, especially because it looks, we're, we're attempting to put an emphasis on restoring tuition reimbursement, or, you know, encouraging that, and providing, and, and creating more pathways, more, more cohorts with George Mason and other places and online, if that isn't what's working. So I'm, I'm struggling on the 11, because if you look, out of the 820, 868 that are represented in the gray there, those are some kind of big numbers in that 11, 12, 13. And I know there's going to be some teacher out there that's in 11, 12, 13, who's going to go, "I can't believe you're singling me out", but I'm just trying to figure out where that point is. And then, what does this look like in an attrition model? What, who do we attrit in years 11 to 23? Because the 57.5 million, does that presume, is that, I don't know how that was built, I don't know how you created that. So is that built that every single employee in each of those 11 through 23 stays all the way till the end of their career?
And if we don't know for sure, we just need to say we don't know for sure, so I, I, I don't know, off the top of my head.
So we did factor some attrition each year turning over, so as more people would be moving into those higher steps, there would be people coming off of those steps from retirement, you know, or, or other reasons, so there was-
I don't mean, I mean, of course you would plan retirement, I would imagine that, but what I'm saying is, people leave. I mean, people, people do leave, and so, you know, I don't know what our attrition rate is for people in salary scales between 11 and 23, but I would imagine that on this distribution model, on a histogram, you should be able to plot out what is our trend of losing people between 11, 23, and if that's a percentage, you apply that to this, so that we're, we're dealing with not the absolute, because I'm assuming these, the 57.5 million is, is actual numbers. That's not a salary average by step, right? Is the 57.5 million based on the act, these actual people and their actual salaries, or is it based on an average salary by step?
It's based on these people, their actual salaries, with attrition rates, retirement rates, and, and retention rates all factored in, based on current information.
Okay, so that's, that's, actually, that's very good news. What, what has been the input from teachers? From, I mean, because there's 868 teachers that I would have hoped we would have heard from. I would hope you would have 868 individual pieces of information, at least, that provide us some, I mean, have we attempted to find out what-
Well, the big nugget is, if your teacher's on the first 10 steps, you're going to win on the new scale. You're going to gather more money. If you're at step 11, you're win if you stay your whole career, if you stay through with us, you're going to win staying on the old scale. So that, that's the work that Marty did and his team did with the associations, to determine career lifetime earnings, which is the best scale. I totally am with you about at the end, it's this group at the end who have the yelp the loudest, "Oh my God, I'm at the end. I don't want to go back and get a masters," right? The other folks, "Hey, look, you know, you got the winning scale, you're good." The, the real burn left for the board is the group at the very, very end. "I, I've been here 20-some years, I don't want to go back now and get a masters, can we do an equivalency?" Or, you know, "What would it look like to help just make me feel whole in the organization over the remaining years I want to stay, and, and certainly not push me out to go somewhere else?"
Okay, so that's really, I think, this is where, the sweet spot, I think, where the conversation has to happen is, at what point is it reasonable to have a conversation with somebody and say, "Look, our goal", and I'm not even saying that it should be our goal, because I do think it should be content-specific. I think having everybody goes to a master's scale is going to drive our salary scale up astronomically. So the question is, do, do we message to somebody who's, who's mid-career, "Your year 10, 11, 12?", "No, you don't have to get a masters, your, your eight, nine, 10?", you do. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's the right split, you know, I, I feel like it's a little bit higher up. And I do think there is a duty, because I think it was improperly messaged to us, and I think we improperly carried it out. Because you have a veteran teacher who's, you know, I mean, look at that, that 18, 19, 20, 20, you know, they're being a mentor to a new teacher who graduated with a, you know, they're, they had a four-plus-one program, they come out with a masters, they're a brand-new teacher. So they're on the master's scale already, but it's that veteran teacher in the next classroom who's teaching the same subject, who's their mentor. So I do think that there is a, a duty, and then, the only other question I have at this point is, is the cost that's planned out, the 19-year cost, that, that's, that counts VRS and everything, I mean, that's the whole, that's the full load. So the 57.5 million isn't salary per se, it's the, it's the burden of the VRS.
It's the salary-sensitive items as well.
Okay, so salary-sensitive items is the load. My last point is, I agree completely with Ms. McLaughlin, as my number two was written on here, is what's happening on the county, on the county side. We, we have to have that conversation, because I feel like we've heretofore been operating in a vacuum, and we're attempting desperately to break out of that. And the only way we can do that is, is have that conversation, what's total compensation look like? We keep talking salaries, and not total compensation to the other wavy organizations against which we're trying to compare, and against whom, we have no report of our actual loss of teachers, so we don't, we're, it's a little bit like Phantom on Phantom, that we're having this conversation, but unless we have the total compensation discussion, and we only operate narrowly on salary, we are not talking about what it means to be employed here. You're not employed with your salary alone, it's the whole kit and caboodle.
Next is Ms. Keys-Gamaro, but Ms. McLaughlin, you wanted to speak to Ms. Schultz just-
Yeah, just a quick correction, if I recall, and, and Dr. Brabran, you were there, the county executive, Brian Hill, when I asked the question at one of our most recent joint work sessions is, when they do their market analysis, they're only doing salary. So we are, I've always said I want to know our total compensation, but in terms of equity for our employees versus equity of county employees, it, it doesn't seem fair to do a different standard. So if the county does their, their market analysis for their salaries, and they're not counting in their supplemental retirement and all the other things on there, then, you know-
But Ms. McLaughlin, the only thing I would say in response to that is, is that I don't know, I haven't been following their employment matters. I don't know if they're being told, "Your firefighters are leaving to go do firefighting in Loudon, because they get a better salary there." The, the, all of this began with the narrative that, you know, theoretically, we had teachers fleeing to surrounding jurisdictions to get a better salary. And so that's, that, that's all I have to compare us against, and so what the county is doing or not doing, if the reality is, we have to discuss teacher retention, and I don't know if there's a nationwide, you know, firefighter shortage, or a nationwide police, or a nationwide nurse shortage. I know there's a nation, nationwide teacher shortage, so in, in some respects, I think it is important that we have that-
Well, I was told, and when they do police and fire, they're doing salary to salary, and so I, I think that's, that's a challenge.
Thank you, that, thank you for that correction and bit of information. So we have Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. I, I think what I am leaning toward is, I would love to see the standards, I know we have the standards of having our salaries between 95 and 105%, and certainly we're trying to deal with this cohort at the, at the very end of there. But I, I, I wonder, I think some of the folks you told me were actually above, right? They were above that salary. But then there's more people coming in line, correct?
So if, if we would continue, if you look at, oh, we're, we're on a different slide, but if you go back to the presentation, and you see the two scales going up parallel to one another, those individuals who are in the yellow portion of the scale, as they go up, they would continue to be above the market average.
So I guess what I'm looking for is some sort of priorities from us as a board, what's important to us. First of all, for me, I don't like the bonus idea, just to weigh in on where I, bonus versus market, the MSA. But also, I love the idea of being able to compare to our competitors, and I'm with Ms. Schultz with respect to understanding. I, I've heard this myth, I don't know if it's the myth, or it's actual, actually the truth, but I've certainly heard that we're bleeding teachers, and they're going to these other places for these salaries. And, and we need to understand where on the scale that's happening, because that would then guide, I think, should be guiding our decisions in some respect. So we, do we have that information?
So, so, so with regard to that information, when we looked at the charge from the board, it was to look at the grandfathered scale, and that the non-grandfathered scale, we had begun implementing the scale, and so the board had already done that work, and so we have not gone back to look at that work, because that's been signed off on, and we were moving forward, and, and only looking at those individuals who were above-market, who weren't going to receive the benefit of the non-grandfathered scale. So no, we haven't done that work, and I'd have to ask the team how readily we could get that information.
So I guess the reason I'm asking that is because, at some point, I think you said, the, the rub really happens around level 11, right? And so that's where it becomes relevant, if we're starting to go all the way back to 11, then we need to know where it's important to do something other than, because we don't have unlimited resources, right? So I guess that's what, I, I feel like we need those guidelines, the clearest I can come up with is, I don't like the bonuses. That's the easy one, right? But then I want more, more information to be able to say what's important, right? I want to make sure we're within that 95 to 105%. I want to make sure that we are comparable to what the surrounding jurisdictions are doing, so that we, you know, we're, the, the fact that it's Fairfax County counts for something, and we're able to hold on to our teachers, but I want to see if that's a real issue. And I'd also like to look at ways that our senior teachers- And I'd also like to look at ways that our senior teachers too, perhaps have had that BA, didn't have the opportunities that we've talked about. But they have these invaluable skills that I know our kids are benefiting from. Have we taken the time to identify what those are? So that then we can calculate that into how we compensate them. Right, supporting what Ms. Corbin-Sanders said. So I would like to identify, first of all, what our principles are. And then what the information is from the surrounding area and where our problems actually are, where we're losing teachers. I guess as a summary of what I just said.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, can I, I just want to follow up on what Ms. Keys-Gamaro said. I mean, I, and I know you've just been on the board a year. But I think when we started this process in the salary analysis, this, that mid-year teachers is where we were losing teachers. And that's why we talked about that group, bringing that group up, you know, to ninety-five to one-hundred-and-five percent. And then, everything, and because of that, when we saw those teachers at the end of the scale that were so above one-hundred-and-five percent, that's when we kind of find ourselves where we are today.
And with that, so if you look at this blue scale, everything within that blue area is within ninety-five to one-hundred-and-five percent of the market. The blue area is where we want our employees to be. And so all of our employees are within ninety-five to one-hundred-and-five percent of the market for lifetime earnings within that scale. It's the individuals who are in the yellow portion. And if you think of this as the market, you can then clearly see that the individuals in the yellow portion of the scale, they are above market. And so we grandfathered those employees, because they were above market. We were going to provide the recommendation of giving them some kind of a bonus to give them additional dollars. We know that the board wasn't necessarily in agreement with that option. So we came back with the option of this here, which would give them MSAs for the remainder of their careers. Which, again, as you can see, if this is our market, those employees are above market. But again, you're balancing that with recognizing their time within the system. You're balancing that with recognizing the fact that you would want to continue to give them some kind of salary credit toward retirement. So that's really where the pull is at this point. It's wanting to value and wanting to recognize that. And also understanding, as I heard Ms. Schultz and other board members say, that there, we do have a finite, we have finite resources in trying to figure out how best to accomplish that. And so wanting to address that for the board as an option, to bring this forward. Because as we looked at other options, it becomes very difficult to look at the eight-hundred individuals that you're talking about, Ms. Schultz, and look at eight-hundred different pay options for those employees as they step through the blue scale, stepping then into the yellow scale, and then trying to figure out how to create different options for them when they step into step twenty-three. So this option, as I said earlier, was a bit of a, it's a simplistic option. But it's an option that provides additional supports and resources for those teachers at the top of the scale, while also doing it without as much complexity for staff and for payroll to have eight-hundred different pay options for individuals.
My concern is, I'm not sure where that, the yellow ends. And how many people can end up in the yellow? I guess that's where my confusion is.
The people who would end up in the yellow, if you could just toggle back to the previous chart?
That's the whole eight-hundred and...
Would be the eight-sixty-eight. The eleven, the people who are in eleven on up, those are the individuals who would eventually end up in the yellow portion of the scale.
But new people coming into eleven, say, for example, if you're five and six, you don't eventually jump into this scale?
No, if you're currently in step ten, you will stay in the blue portion of the scale. If you're on step eleven, you will go until the end of the blue scale and then you'll jump into that yellow portion of the scale. So these employees here are within market all the way until they get to step nineteen. Once they hit step twenty, they would then be above the market.
Once we set that precedent, I guess that's my concern, right?
Not yet.
And my team is telling me that it's fifteen-hundred people, because this is just one lane on the scale. And again, this is all very complex work that we're working on on a daily basis. And trying to explain it can be difficult. But that progression, these employees here who are on step eleven would remain on the blue portion of the scale until they were on step nineteen. And then they would step into the yellow portion of the scale, which, as you could see from the other chart, is above market. And again, that's the decision point for the board. It's valuing that service, it's valuing that time, valuing their expertise. And then what is the value that you place on that?
Mr. Smith, fifteen-hundred people is what percentage of our total workforce? For teachers?
Ten percent?
Yeah.
About ten percent.
Ten percent, okay, thank you. Ms. Strauss?
Just to review how we got to this position to start with. During the recession, where we were not able to keep up with pay for anybody, and there is a nationwide teacher shortage. And we were not able to hire people. We were opening school with vacancies. And in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And we also were at a point where we were asking for money from the Board of Supervisors. In large part, to be able to pay our people and to stop having to raise class size. And we had to continue to raise class size. We went and employed an outside consulting firm to give us a market study, because all the departments, everybody was asked to reduce their base budgets. And part of the challenge when you were going back to ask the community for additional money, it is public money. And then the question is, well, you want to be market competitive, you don't want to be over-market. So you have a problem, a public problem there. And it is always easier to swallow if you are going to make some pay-scale adjustments to not have it impact any of your current employees. You don't save as much money that way. But it's a little bit easier on the entire organization. So I can see why, and we certainly know from listening to our employees, that having whatever adjustments count towards retirement is important. Which is why a bonus, while in a short-term situation, is always appreciated. But long-term, an MSA figures into your retirement. And people within our profession, they care deeply about, can I ever retire? As anybody would. So I can see why you've offered on slide seventeen, another option. It does create employees who are above market. And if we can be, and of course, as we know, the economic cycles go up and down. And when you have enough money to be able to pay people generously and, as we are grateful for the people who work for us for long periods of time and have great skills, we want to keep them with us, you know, all the way to retirement. This helps to satisfy that appreciation towards all of our employees. It does cost us more than the original study, it does cost more over time. The additional cost year to year does not seem huge. But clearly, if we have the money to be able to do this, I think this will be appreciated by employees better. But again, reminding us where we have come. I believe, I don't know, have the Board of Supervisors finally decided what they're going to do with their? Because they've been doing a market study as well. Have they made their decision as to what they're going to do with their employees?
No, they're not at that point in public at this point with their market study.
Right, and this is, again, part of the, part of the challenge is that we were pretty desperate to be able to give some better pay increases if we were going to employ teachers. So that was the decision where we went to the outside consulting firm to help us with the market study, to justify being able to put more money and asking for more money so we could pay our people better, so we could employ them. And we are ahead of where the Board of Supervisors are. And who knows what their, we don't know yet what their decisions are going to be. So that's kind of where we've been. So I appreciate giving us another option. And I am sure that while some of the employees will end up over-market, those people will be very grateful to be able to be given the pay increases. And I hope that the economy holds and that we aren't facing in another couple of years a reversal of our progress we've made going forward. So thank you for the other option.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Narco-Fex. I want to thank Ms. Strauss for giving a overall background, how we got to this point. And I also appreciate the fact that we are spending, we've been spending a lot of time on this very important issue. At the same time, I want to caution my board members that we have two other topics this afternoon. And those topics, in my mind, are as important as any other topic. And they've been pushed off from the agenda from prior work sessions. And I am hoping that we will be able to get to those two work sessions as well. It would seem to be we are on the way of becoming about two hours behind overall. So, you know, I am urging my board members to be brief with their remarks from this point on. With that said, for me, for the today's discussion, it is relatively simple. My feedback to you is, I'm glad that you've been able to work out a very good, reasonable solution with employee organizations, the step eleven to be the way it should be for grandfathered, grandfathered scale to begin, to go on. As far as MSA decision is concerned, for the top-scale employees, as you suggested, that we don't have to make that decision today. And I believe that that decision, if we, I am at this point in time inclined to give that MSA to the teachers at the top scale. But that has to be considered, along with the fact that we need to be fair with all our employees in similar fashion. We've been looking at how the market, through the market study, how some groups of employees might be over the market. Because you are in a better financial situation, we are going to set that aside in appreciation for the number of eligible service, valuable service provided by employees. Then we have to be fair to even non-teacher employees in the same regards. And I want to know, going forward, if that has to be incorporated into a superintendent's proposed budget, whether that has any positive impacts, you know, putting into the advertised budget, a proposal for it, for the next year. So, that's where I am. I'm looking forward to our next part of a discussion regarding retirement subsidy.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I think it sounds like we're not going to come to a final conclusion today. And I will say that my, my hope is that we can hold harmless those on the old BA scale, at the top of the BA scale. I have to say, I was surprised when you came back, that the cutoff was step eleven. I had thought that the hold harmless would have been higher. But I know you've done the math on it. What was step eleven on the old scale? And what's step eleven on the new scale for BA? Just the salary?
We're pulling that up.
Okay. While you're doing that, I will say, I do think that we should, at the top of the scale, the idea of continuing to have a bonus, I mean, currently, what we have is, anybody, at some point, it stops, correct? And everybody simply gets whatever MSA everyone else gets in the normal scheme of things, correct?
Yeah, so in the normal scheme of things, these employees who are in the yellow portion of the scale, when they left the system, that would leave with them. But that would, they would get an MSA as other employees would get MSAs. They wouldn't get any set MSA. So we're not going to say that they're going to get a one percent MSA. Under this, we calculated under a one percent. But their MSA would match the MSA for other employees.
Well, so whatever, whatever else we decide to do, I do think that we should just stick with that. That those at the top of the scale, who in the past would have leveled off and only have been eligible for the MSA. And that continues to be our approach to the MA scales and to the, to all of the other scales. So I don't see why we would provide a bonus for just this one group of people. I understand that we've done it in the, in the past, just because we were trying to do something while we figured out, you know, we were trying to do something in the short term, while we figured out what to do in the long term. I think once we do something in the long term, we eliminate the bonus at the top. It just doesn't make sense to have one category of employees have a bonus at the top when everyone else is only eligible for the MSA. So I will say that. And as far as the, you know, my goal is to make sure that we do hold them harmless. I think it's less a matter of where the market is. I understand that we've changed our scales to be, to relate to the market. I do think that in the case of employees who have been with us for a long time, that's less important than being fair to them in terms of keeping promises and making sure that we don't disadvantage them severely. Those who are at the mid-range actually got significant, significant raises as a result of the change in scale. And that was by design. We wanted to, our mid-career teachers were not being paid appropriately. And I totally support increasing the pay scale in the mid-range. But again, that's why I was surprised that the cutoff was eleven as opposed to more like sixteen or seventeen. So that's why I want to do a little bit more of an analysis of that cutoff.
So there's an overlay here, because when we looked at the SAG that we were looking at, we were looking at those teachers in the masters lane. And so as we looked at the teachers in the bachelor's lanes, we're looking at a different group of teachers as we looked at that SAG in the middle for a majority of those teachers. If you look for our bachelor's lanes, we note that they were closer to market. And our individuals at the top of the scale were closer to market. It was that SAG was mostly based on the masters lane that we were looking at overall.
The masters, okay. Have you found the number for the old step eleven and the new step eleven?
Yes, BA step eleven on the twenty-seventeen scale was sixty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars.
And what is it now, the new scale?
On the new scale, step eleven is sixty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars for the twenty-nineteen scale.
So that's where, I'm not understanding this, then, that step elevens would be better off under the new scale? Not worse off?
We're talking eventually. So those individuals, if you're at step eleven, you're on the new scale at step eleven. And then, once you got to step nineteen, you would be at the top of your scale and you would be frozen.
No, I understand that, but that's still, no, let me continue, please. Step, somebody, so we're not saying that a step eleven would go back to the seventeen scale, are we?
No, we are not.
Okay, so a step eleven is better off in today's scale than they would have been under the seventeen scale?
Until they get to step nineteen.
No, I understand that. So, but why are we dealing with step, well, I think we need to think about the math a little bit more, because unless we're telling the step elevens, we'll go back to the old scale. You know, and then you will eventually get to, eventually you'll be better off. We need to think about where the real cutoff is. I mean, they're now making four thousand dollars a year more than they would have under the old scale. So there is an advantage to a step eleven now, until you get hired, right? No, I understand that. So I mean, I need to take a look at these, at these skills. Because we did disadvantage the people up at the very top of the BA scale. We severely did, because they... We severely did, because they, they basically got to the end of the line a lot sooner than they would have, and they lost a lot at, at the very top. I'm feeling, I'm, I'm, I have more questions, though, about those that, that, for one thing, two years ago, the folks on step 11 now were at step 9. So, I, I just think we need to, to think about that a little bit more.
Dr. Brabran, you had something to add?
You know what I really think? We're going to need to come back and present this to you in a different way that's cleaner and clearer for you to understand and for the public, because we've worked very hard, we've tried, but policy has got to be clear, and clarity is what's going to create good policy. And I, I think, listening to your questions, it's, some questions are making it clear, some are making it more confusing, and we just need to come back. We're going to come back and present in a way and give you menu of options and choices.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran.
And we'll make it clean and clear that way. And, you know, sometimes you don't know until you bring it, it seems like it's clear, but when you put it in front of 12 other people who've got to take a vote and be accountable to the community, maybe it's not as clear as you think it is. So, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I appreciate that. We have one question, and then we will go look at the next steps. Two questions.
I just had a quick question on that chart that was just there, for the graphic. Okay, so, Mr. Smith, when we were having all these different conversations, and Ms. Kiesger, you kind of brought it into focus for me. The yellow bar is, again, the reason why it looks so far above the purple, is because part of it is that we are stopping, on the new scale, we stop where you are going to learn, you're going to earn any steps after 19, if you, if you only possess a bachelor's degree.
Exactly. When you got to step 19, you were.
Right. But if you go back to the other scale, where I think that one there, the visual makes it look so dramatic. And yet, all we're talking about is, we made whole the people who were supposed to be getting steps 20 through 23, that we've now wiped out in an effort to, yes, goose up mid-year teachers, but also to encourage people to move to the master's lane, master scale. Go get your masters, you're going to be rewarded better in Fairfax County schools for it. But that yellow bar is really just representing that those were the missing steps, and then the 1% after that. And the reason why the purple never catches up is because they're, they're basically saying to you, you're supposed to be moving over to your masters by then, or otherwise you are losing money in the system. So, I guess, the reason, the, the visual and the graphics on this, almost, even though it's a scale, it doesn't look like it's drawn to scale in the sense that it starts at $50,000 where the bottom of the bar is, and then you show where the yellow is, I, I just think it creates a, visually, it looks like it's so much more, but we're just talking about the fact that people are being provided those four extra years of step that they thought they were going to be able to get with only a bachelor's degree. So it's that four, four years of a missing step, plus your 1% that keeps you always above, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. And then, Dr. Brabran, I just want to say thank you for what you said, but as correction to what Ms. Darnett Kofax said earlier, I will say this. The bottom line was, what was presented to us initially on this salary scale, which was a consulting firm chosen by Dr. Garza, not this board, recommendations that came from a consulting firm that many of us had problems with from the moment they presented, to oversimplified information to the point that not just have we wrestled with the BA lane impact, but now as we move into the next section, the substitute teacher pay. So, you're, once again, I'm just reiterating, you've inherited something because this board was not given comprehensive, detailed enough information, and when the stakeholders, our teachers, helped enlighten us on what information was missing, we suddenly realized we didn't have a full picture. So, Ms. Darnett Kofax, I'm just sort of making that clear, because I don't think this board made an informed decision, and it wasn't because we're not being engaged in the work. We went with the information given to us, and it was insufficient at the time. And, Dr. Brabran, you've been incredibly patient since you arrived at this division to help us sort through it, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate my colleagues being as dedicated to getting this right.
Ms. Schultz, quickly, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned because the, the figure, if we could go back to the attachment that shows the distribution, I'm worried, because there was this question about, was it 1,500, was it 868, was it 2710, which is the figure that I gave, which is everybody represented on that, on the attachment? And the reality is, it's D, none of the above. It's actually 730 plus all those people. And I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit frustrated right now, because I asked specifically for this information, and those 868 are not it. You have to add another 730 on top of that, which is to get to the BA 15 plus 30. So I don't know why they're not included, because now we're not talking about a universe of 868. We're talking about a universe, you know, of almost 1,600. And I think it changes the conversation that happened here today. So, I don't know, I don't know how we fix that going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Just, I'll just make brief comments. I appreciate everybody's hard work. I think it is, I do think, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. McLaughlin, but the board, we do have to own our decisions, and, and, and we then have to, if we make a decision based upon whatever information we have at hand, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not, and then you have to move forward and, and work on this together. And that's where we are. So, Dr. Brabran, I appreciate what you have said. I think it is, I think as we hear this, and I do have to say, part of, I get frustrated personally, because of the way we have to be structured in a way the sunshine laws hamper, hamper you from kind of get, getting us in little working groups and giving us this information. I think it's very, very difficult sometimes. You all worked really hard, and you've been, not beat up by us, but there's, but we're not, we don't feel, sometimes I feel like when you work as hard as you do, and we're, we're still not satisfied as a group, it's frus, it's a little frustrating, and I think there's, and, and I think that's where many of us are today. So, with, with that statement in mind, I appreciate you going forward, and as you bring different solutions, if you feel, as the current budget chair, sometimes two-by-twos work well, if you feel like that's a better option for us, and, and then collectively, you know, then bringing it back to another work session.
In fact, I think you've just given, that is a great nugget. I think, you know, we were thinking March, and you know what, maybe, Mr. Smith, we do on some of our placeholders, is we do do some two-by-twos, so that when we bring it back, we're farther along in not having to start everybody from scratch.
I know that often helps in some of, some of our other.
Especially on this particular item.
Yeah, and some of our more complex items, because we can't meet in smaller committees, and we can't do anything rather than meet in this fashion, and we're limited in our times. So, so that, thank you for thinking that that's a, a possible solution, you can make that decision. And with that, we will look at next steps from the three different agenda items that we have.
Oh, Lordy.
There's substitute pay, right there.
There's such a pay. I'm not meaning to say let me glide about, let's, let's go.
Well, we've basically done, and, and thinking about the time, if you look at, at the daily rates at the bottom, we provided you some information in the last work session around substitute pay rates, and initially, we brought this forward because of some questions around the retiree rate. We then were asked by the board to provide some costing for raising the non-retiree rates to 100% of the market, so you can see the costs associated with that. And then we'd also discussed a leave buyback program, and so we, we noted the costs associated with the leave buyback program. And so, you can see that those are options for the board to consider as part of the budget process, nothing to be decided here today, but that you could decide that as part of the process. If we were to go with those three items, it would be a total cost of $2.6 million. We have a placeholder of $1 million in the budget, and so we, the board would need to consider adding an additional $1.6 million to the budget. We've then provided you what those daily pay rates would look like at the bottom for short-term and long-term rates, for our subs without degrees, those with BAs, and for our retirees on both the short-term and the long-term. And you can then see the change in daily pay between what they're making now, which is what we have for FY19 rates, and what we would have if we paid them all at 100% of the market. And then, this is based on the recommendations and the asks from the board at the last work session.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Well, I'm going to try to be very specific, so I don't understand why there's a cost associated with the leave buyback program, because it saves money. That's a, that's a money saver, not a money coster, because if, if people are burning their leave, they're burning at a full day's rate, and you're paying a substitute the full day's rate, so that's the full cost. If you buy back their program, their leave, you're going to buy it about, I think it's like 30 or 40 cents on the dollar. So that's a 60% savings, not, not a cost. And so, I, I see this as a way for us to reduce our overall substitute costs and make employees, I think, happier, because they'll be able to walk with that money at the end of a career, you know, with a cap. So, I'm not, I don't understand that point for.
You're cor, you're correct when we talk about those employees who are teachers, but we also have non-teacher employees who are in ERFC, and so we would want to provide that same buyback, we would offer that same buyback for those employees, because those employees do not receive subs. And so, it would be difficult to have a buyback, a buyback program for our ERFC participants, and not provide that for all of those participants in ERFC, and not just our teacher participants in ERFC.
What is the ratio of non-ERFC to ERFC, and what is the rate of pay for a non-ERFC to a ERFC? I mean, I find it impossible to believe that this is not a money saver. I mean, I ran, I, I was the meeting manager for that work session, and we went through this in a lot of detail. This is a, this is a win-win-win, particularly as we look at that very, very high cost of, of substitutes. And so if we're bringing that down right there, you're, you're saving money. So, I'm not sure, I, I don't understand this figure.
We can get that as part of a, a next step, we can provide that answer, the breakdowns that you're looking for.
Sell it, it's a money saver, not a money coster. Come on, let's, we got to talk about what, what things save, just as much as we talk about what things cost. I mean, that's, that's the reality of a balanced conversation.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I know we're pressed for time, so I will just simply say to this slide, which I wish we had more information than just the slide, but when, in terms of the budget, I'm 100% for anything we can do to bring our substitute pay to 100% of the market. I, I think this is, without question, hopefully something to help us with our substitute pay situation. Dr. Brabran, I'll just say, I continue to hear from our teachers in the building, and principals, too. We are having a significant problem with filling our substitute requests, and so if we, if we don't figure out what that is, and maybe part of it is, we've got to figure out with the next calendar, how to look at ways to not have some of this professional development being done, where we're going to need to be pulling in so much substitute usage, because teachers are just having to cover each other's classrooms, and I think that's bad for morale, too. So, but I appreciate anything we can do with this. And then, just again, to something that, that Ms. Darnett Kofax said, again, I don't think this board has been beating up you or the leadership team today. I don't want people to think that. That is what was said. What, we're, we're not, we're not being critical, what we're, what we're trying to do is, is simply, you know, well, you're saying we're being hard on staff, and I don't think we're being hard on staff. Anyway, the bottom line is, I think that all we're trying to do is ensure that we can make good decisions, but the questions that I've heard being asked today are not adversarial, they're just simply to figure out how we can get to good, solid decisions that the board can then stand behind, rather than, as you've seen, us having to relive substitute pay and bachelor lane issues for quite some time now.
Karen Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for presenting the information. I'm a little confused by it, so I'm hoping you're going to help me. It's my understanding that what we were looking at was trying to offset the cost, or actually diminish the demand for substitutes. That's what we were asking for. So I am a little surprised that our leave buyback program includes non-teachers, because we have differentiation in our, in how we treat employees all the time. And we have employees that get paid significant number, significant dollars, and, you know, they, they don't get substitutes when they're out, because they're professionals and they accomplish the work they need to get done. So, the leave buyback that adds an extra, you said 0.6 million by addressing, or is it 0.4 million, is for the non-teachers that are going to get leave buyback? I, I think we need to put that in a parking lot, because that's really about how we compensate employees and different groups of employees. And so the market, if the market's not demanding that we compensate groups of employees for not taking all their vacation days or their sick days, then I question why we're putting that here. And then we also want to look at why we actually are looking at the leave buyback, which was because we increased the number of days that our employees received for flexibility that weren't vacation days, they were actually sick days or personal days. And the reason we gave it to them was because we weren't paying them a market rate. And we did it at a time when this board didn't have the flexibility to do the MSAs, so, and I say we, it happened before I was on the board, but I take full responsibility as a board member, that that's what we were dealing with. And so we actually, as a result of giving more personal days, we drove up the demand for substitute pay, or for substitutes. And so, that's the group we want to address, not everybody else in the whole organization regarding buyback. So I'd like to have the number of, what does it really cost us for substitute teachers? Where's the savings of keeping teachers in the classroom rather than requiring a substitute? So what's the expectation there? The second thing is, if we go down to our substitute daily pay rate comparison, we talk about our market rate, and I'm a little confused by this, because the market rate for a short-term sub actually is what is the cost that we have to pay a short-term sub. And then based on that, we then determine whether or not it is somebody with a BA degree or a retiree. So I don't think the market rate is necessarily tied to that category. It's a little different in the long-term side of things, because our long-term subs, we actually have an expectation that they will do lesson plans, grading, and actually provide the full, the fuller role than somebody who's just an incidental some, sub for a day, and therefore not actually doing the more comprehensive services that we expect from our long-term. So I'm confused why we have the differential, because when we talked about this in October, I think, we actually talked about where's the demand for subs, who's satisfying the demand, and we thought we had addressed it, but that we questioned about the BA degrees, and whether or not they needed to be compensated more than the non-degree. And it was, and so I'm a little confused, did we, and, and granted, it was six weeks ago, and I'm getting older, but I don't remember saying we wanted to make adjustments in the short-term rates, an additional adjustment to the retiree. short-term rates, an additional adjustment to the retiree versus the BA. Am I correct, or am I...
Without having it in front of me, I do know that we were asked to bring our sub rates back and have them at the market rate. So we went back and provided the calculation, and this is the calculation of having those sub rates at the market rate for our non-BA, our BA, and our retiree.
And how did you determine the market?
With that, I will ask Alice on looking at our comparators, but how exactly we determined the market for our calculations? No, it's Sean. We'll have that for you.
So the calculation was based upon the market that was defined in the October 15th presentation. And I can list the school divisions in one second.
It's just, I'm trying to figure out, there were a couple of things that are different than what we discussed in October and what we asked for in October, and I was just trying to figure out how we got from what our requests were to where we got here. And so the biggest thing is instituting the leave buyback to everybody versus just the teachers, because that actually is a net savings if we have our teachers do the buyback. And then the second piece is to better understand, and the reason I'm asking is because, you know, we need to be conscious of if we hit a roadblock in the next couple of years from a recession point of view. I don't wanna be in a situation where we've increased all of our pay rates, our daily and long-term rates, to above a market, and then we end up over-correcting similar to what we did a couple of years ago, and we've now, you know, then we lose the faith of the community.
Certainly. And one thing that we do do as part of when things come through through my office and with our analysis, our analysts in the office, is we will go back to the school board meetings because we want to make sure that we're providing the information that the board has asked as completely as possible. So we will certainly go back to that last tape to make sure that we provided that as completely as possible.
So if I could just take a second to give you the market. It included Arlington, Alexandria, Falls Church, Loudoun, Manassas City, Montgomery, Prince George's, and Prince William.
And that included non-degree, BA degree, and retirees in each of those areas?
That's correct.
Okay, are you good? All right, Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Palchuk.
I have one clarifying question plus a suggestion to make to superintendent, if that makes any sense. Looking at very top line, raising retiree rates to those in FY20 fiscal forecast, you are using FY20 fiscal forecast as opposed to market rate? So if you could just clarify for us the distinction between that and that.
So the top line refers to what's in the fiscal forecast? And so that is bringing retiree substitute rates back to or closer to where they were prior to the reductions that were made several years ago.
So how is that related to a market rate? Is that above or below? I just wanna make sure that everybody understands where we are.
It's above.
It is above. That was my understanding. So with that in mind, the next question is, in the fiscal forecast we had a few weeks ago from STEM members, that did we have $1 million as the holder for the next year? So we still need another 1.6 to accomplish this. I know that there have been some questions regarding, you know, buyback program of $400,000, but in grand scheme of the thing, that's a small amount of money. For the purpose of putting into proposed budget so that we can see, you know, what the potential gap may be, that I would like to suggest superintendent incorporate entire 2.6 to the proposed budget and show us what that would mean for the bottom line. That's my suggestion.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. So just to clarify, Mr. Moon, you're recommending that we take that, this recommended 2.6 million and include it in the budget?
Entirely, and I wanna see what the bottom line is gonna show. At the present time, the last time we had a joint session, you know, joint meeting with the County Board of Statistics was a $15.6 million. There are a few other items coming up, and we are expecting governor's budget to be released hopefully by this Friday. Hopefully, we have some better news, and there are some adjustments with revenue and expenditures. I wanna see what the bottom lines would look like. From there, we can make some changes.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on this, staff, and I thank you for working with our employee groups and our retiree groups and coming up with this. I have a couple clarifying questions, I think. So one, a little related to Mr. Moon's. If the top one is the fiscal forecast, do we know how that would compare to, you have the market rate for retirees? Is that higher, lower, the same? You said that was, you said the fiscal forecast is, sorry, higher. I just wanna clarify, because I think it's still a little bit unclear, that if we were to take the market rate for retirees, you're saying that would be lower than what is incorporated in the fiscal forecast number? I just wanna clarify, is that what you're saying? And maybe I would just like to know what those numbers are. It would be great to see the rate, the 20 fiscal forecast, because I assume the market has changed from the time we initially made that change.
We can get that for you.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you, just to see what we're looking at, what that delta is. And then, and I guess my question, and I did meet with a current retiree, recent retiree who's back working in her school as a substitute, and there were some questions, and I don't know if these were considered. I know with our pay, with our salary employees, it's a little bit more complicated to look at kind of incentivized differentiation or bonuses. It seems that here, not only do we wanna try to address the demand side, but maybe the incentives for where we do have the higher needs, seems like it would be a little bit easier to do for substitutes, say, whether it's, you know, the type of role, whether it's secondary versus elementary, whether it's specialized, special ed, science, math versus general ed, and whether it's, let's say, a Monday and Friday versus a Wednesday. So I guess my question is, because this is really, you know, filling in where we have gaps in trying to reduce the number of unfilled positions, I guess, A, you know, the analysis of where, I know we've seen that before, those unfilled positions are, and B, if there is, if we're considering, or if we could consider a way to have slightly more pinpointed look at how to have those, our goal is to have the positions filled, right? And so this is kind of a broad stroke of things that we think would be able to help, but then more targeted areas. I don't know if we've looked at that, whether it's the type of position, the day of that position, to help do that. And I don't know if other school systems are or are not doing that, and if we've considered that. And then finally, my last question, I'll just throw it out there, is I've heard a concern also that sometimes in special classrooms, we have an IA who's out for a long period of time, but they do not get substitutes. So I don't know if there's a way to look at, is that not true? Okay, so that, those are questions I had, and would love to hear your answers to that.
So in terms of the targeting, we did look at targeting by day and presented that to the board at the last meeting, and there really wasn't enough consensus around wanting to move forward with targeting by day. We hadn't looked at any of those other particular areas, but we do know that when we looked at targeting by day, that the board didn't feel as comfortable with moving forward with that as a particular option.
And secondary versus elementary, I don't know if we've looked at those numbers, but has that been considered?
So no, we didn't consider those particular things. We can certainly take a look, but we hadn't considered, we had looked at the day because that was really where we saw the largest increases in wanting to perhaps provide more dollars for those substitutes who would take a sub job on a Friday or a Monday.
Yeah, and I know my understanding was that first, we wanted to target the demand on that being created by our end, but that's helpful. Sorry, and I have one other question. The leave buyback program, do we feel, do we have evidence or suggestion that, let's say, employees on the front end and the, you know, who are far from retirement will be incentivized by that program? Do we know that that truly will be an incentive? Is there any analysis on that?
Well, there hasn't been analysis. We know that when we did our surveys with our employees, they were really very focused on some kind of incentive program where there would be some type of leave buyback. And we know that other jurisdictions have taken advantage or taken part in some type of leave buyback program. So informally, yes, through surveys, we would, we know that our employees would readily take advantage of a leave buyback program. That was one of the top things that they highlighted in the survey to teachers.
Okay, thank you. And then for the IAs, you were saying, Sean, that's not true, that our IAs do have substitutes?
IAs do get subs, yes. So if there's a specific concern at a specific school, then we can work to remedy that, but ultimately substitutes are offered for instructional assistants that are working directly with students.
Okay, and we don't see a higher rate of unfulfilled subs in that area?
Not generally, no.
Not generally, okay, so it might be more school by school. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Evans.
Okay, I'll start with my priorities and just maybe my colleagues can weigh in on that. I think when we had this discussion, for me, my primary focus was on retirees, because I think we can get those experienced teachers back in the classroom, that's very valuable. When I look at the options you have listed, raise retiree rates, fiscal year 20, fiscal forecast, but I don't see the 100% of market for them. Do we have that? I mean, it doesn't look like we're comparing apples to apples in those top two categories. Okay, I must have, I didn't quite understand that. So we don't have that number right now? And then also, do we have the number for, and I know Ms. Corbett Sanders asked about that, instituting a leave buyback program only for the subs? We don't have that number right now? Only for the teachers?
No, we would have to take a look at that and decide which teachers get subs, which don't get subs. There's a bit of a, we'd have to look at the categories for those employees who would get subs, not get subs. It's a deeper dive with that.
Okay, well, I guess that begs the question as to how you were able to come up with a number covering teachers and across the system, if we...
That's looking at the totality of employees who are in ERFC.
Okay. So I guess that the main thing I wanted to know was the raising, what it would cost to raise the retiree rate to 100% of the market, and we don't have that. And also, do we look at how other jurisdictions are dealing with their finding substitute problems? Do we look at their...
We've looked at other, other school systems, and we did bring that information as part of the last presentation. We've looked at this from many different perspectives, and we brought our best thinking at the last meeting and are bringing back the information that the board asked us to provide for this meeting.
Okay, all right. I think my colleagues covered most of what I had to say.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I can certainly support the leave buyback. I think that's an excellent idea, and hopefully that would have more teachers in place. So you don't have a total number for bringing everybody up to market, is that correct? You don't have that yet, but you're working on that? Both non-retirees and retirees, or do you have a figure on that?
Okay, so let me just try to provide some clarification. For the first column where it says no degree short-term rates...
Right.
That 10385 is the market average, the current market average.
Right.
What we had brought back before was something below the market average, so 10385 would bring that group up to market average. Then you go to the second top column of BA degree short-term, 11201 is market average, so we're recommending to bring that group up to the market average. The last column for our retirees in short-term, we brought back, what was included in the fiscal forecast, was a retiree rate of 14350. That is over the market average, 14350.
Is over the market average? It says, it says 100% of market average.
Yeah, that is the market average, but that is not what we assumed in the fiscal forecast. In the fiscal forecast, we assumed that we would pay $20.50 per hour, which works out to be 15375. So you can see that it's more than that.
Say that again, 150?
15375.
Okay, so, oh, so that, that 0.9 actually is more than market average. Wait, okay.
We need to take time to analyze this, because I use seven and a half hours, and I'm just told it's seven hours, so that's gonna change everything.
All right, so, so it would be, so bringing all of our subs to market average would be something less than 2.6 million? I'm looking at the 2.6 million now total now. Correct?
If we don't know the answer right now, we just need to go back and we'll take a look.
I guess another way of saying it is that top figure, the 0.9, would be something less than 0.9. So we would save some money there, okay. So, all right, well, that's good to know. Where are vacancies greater in short-term or long-term? In terms of percentage?
The greater, the greater vacancy rates are in the short-term.
They are in short-term, okay. Well, I do think that we should probably, you know, when we cut the sub rate a couple of years ago, it wasn't because we wanted to, it was because we were in very difficult budget times, and that was one, one way we, we thought we could help with the budget. So I do support going to market on our subs, and it's good to know that doing all of these things would actually be a little less than the 2.6. So I will agree with Mr. Moon that if I understood you properly, Mr. Moon, that to assume that we would add this back in, so maybe it's 2.4 or something. But whatever that is, I could support doing that. I also received an email from the same retiree that Ms. Palchuk did, and she actually had quite a few things to say that I think were worth noting, including, she had some suggestions on better onboarding for retirees. I can pass that on to all of you. She felt that as a recent retiree, she wasn't really recruited to be a sub, and she thought that that was one thing that we could do, grab them right away. And she said that she felt that the process was cumbersome and difficult to sign up for this, that there were ways that we could, we could help our newest retirees sign up. You were about to say something.
I'd love to get the, get the contact person and then put her in contact with Sean so he can get that feedback and either correct it or look at program improvement in ways that we can do it.
It can be difficult for us to do that for a variety of reasons that have to do with IRS and other issues around recruiting those individuals after retirement.
I'm sorry, how, what's the problem with recruiting them right after retirement?
We have to be able to demonstrate that there is a break in service.
We have to be able to demonstrate that there is a break in service in order to be in alignment with the retirement provisions.
And how long is that break in?
Retirement plan provisions, so there has to be. So we have, our current practice is that individuals need to be separated for 30 days. Those 30 days have to be days that would have been working under normal conditions. So for our teachers who work 10 months of the year, the 30-day period typically starts in August when they would come back to work and runs through the majority of September. So after that point, then we're able to re-employ individuals. And part of the provision prevents us from proactively recruiting them as they're separating from the division. So that would be a violation of the IRS.
Sean, does that count for subs too?
Yes.
That's for subs too?
Yes.
But we can do that after those 30 days, just to clarify? Yes, okay.
Well, so I guess my response to that would be, all right, if we can't do it the minute they walk out the door, we have their address. You know, we know who they are, we know where to send the pension check, right?
No pension check unless you sub for 30 days of the following year.
There you go. I think you're on to something, yeah.
Your first pension check, you have to pick up at the sub office. We can do it that way.
Hey, there you go. See, now we're thinking. So I do think that based on what this recent retiree said, there must be ways that we can connect with them.
We can brainstorm, absolutely.
And she also suggested going to GMU and to Nova. Said, you know, we've got people training there, that that would be a good opportunity for us. So she actually had quite a few ideas. I appreciate Ms. Palchuk sending that out to everybody. So anyway, I think I've said all I have to say. Thanks.
I have two go-bags, if we can be quick, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
All right, first of all, I really appreciate Mr. Moon trying to get us to streamline and focus and just recommend that maybe Dr. Braybrand put the 2.6 into the budget. I mean, we have the placeholder, but add the additional 1.6. My apprehension with that is I feel like our colleagues have asked some really good questions about the leave buyback. And as we know with budgets, once superintendent brings a proposed budget to us, then it's going to take seven votes to pull it back out. And I feel like there was a lot of questions here still. So I'd be a little reluctant to support having this additional 1.6 just automatically rolled back in there. And so I hope we'll just, you know, take a vote about where people are on that. But I do also understand this is the superintendent's budget. So it doesn't matter what our hands up. Scott can decide what he wants to do, but I think it might at least be helpful for you to see where we are on comfort level on the leave buyback portion of this. And then the second thing is, Dr. Braybrand and team, I just think that this slide where you were getting a lot of questions is because the terminology in the top section of this slide doesn't match the bottom section. So when it said raise the retiree rates to fiscal '20 forecast, we talked about that. And then down below, you had the market rates. So I think?
We recognize that. We were having that conversation. There was some miscommunication. That was an oversight, and we apologize. We certainly do apologize for that error with the board. That was not the intention, but?
No, no, of course, it's fine. I'm just saying that when we get this slide maybe revised, just have the top half match the bottom half.
It will be very clear.
There's good information in there. It's just marrying it all together.
It will be very clear.
And then I do think that, I don't know where the board is on this, but the fact that the 100% market rate, you all gave us those numbers, that's extremely helpful. It turned out that for some reason, we had, as, you know, Ms. Burden was talking about, it's just more of a terminology and a calculation. So it might be that the market, 100% market rate for retiree at 14350 might actually be what the fiscal forecast was. It's just a matter of the hours that they work. So what I do think is most important is whether or not the board gives direction or guidance to the superintendent that at minimum, we would like to make sure that our rates for substitute are at the 100% market. And I would just say that where we got here, I will differ in my recollection from Ms. Evans. With substitute pay, it was not about, we were trying to close our budget gaps. What I had understood, it was staff came to us, and it was again before your time and Ms. Burden's time, that said this was the market rate. And then we got pushed back, and I'm seeing Kevin Hickerson nodding in agreement with me. It was the associations who came to us and said, "That market rate really doesn't reflect what the market is." And so we redid the numbers, and that's, so I don't want the public who watches this later think that we balanced our budget based on cutting substitute pay. We went with what the consultant said. And then when we did a deeper dive into those numbers, we ended up finding out that, in fact, the numbers weren't accurate. And I think we've done a responsible job as a board trying to correct that.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. McLaughlin that I'm not comfortable putting in a placeholder of 2.6 when we know that there are some numbers there that we don't really understand and need to be unpacked. So if you can provide an unpacking of those numbers along the lines of what we've talked about today, I think that will be helpful and to make it easier for us to support a placeholder in the budget. The second piece is something that's really not related to substitute pay as much as, and I wasn't going to bring it up until Ms. Evans raised the email from a constituent regarding substitutes in general and how we can recruit them and retain them. And so I'm just leaving this to my fellow colleagues that I think we do need to have a deeper dive conversation about how we recruit and retain and treat our substitutes and temporary employees. Not only from a pay perspective, but also in setting expectations for them as well as due process for them. And so I know that's beyond today's discussion, but I do think that when we talk about substitutes, we need to talk about not only their pay, but also their treatment.
May I add one thing? On December the 5th, Mr. McDonald and his team had a recruiting fair and open house for subs, and we had 104 people attend. So I just wanted to share that.
That's excellent. I'm glad to hear that. But I still think we have to have that conversation. Okay, thanks.
All right, my comments. I agree, I feel there's, using Ms. Corbett-Sanders's words, some numbers we need to unpack before we add this as a placeholder. Also, I just want to say with respect to those who planned the budget session, I know how hard it is and do these agendas. But we had four topics here. There was no way it was going to happen in two hours. I could have used a three-minute rule. I chose not to. I think there was too much here to try to do that. And I don't like that. I don't like being a timekeeper. I don't like cutting people off, and I don't like, you know, the arguments that ensue as a result of that. So we are, what are we, two hours behind schedule? Absolutely. Three hours behind schedule almost. So I will, I was reminded by our clerk that we do not do next steps on budget items. What we do is we will be sent the notes on things we discussed as next steps, and then we can submit them individually as budget questions. So that will take off this time on voting and things like that. And then Ms. Burton went through the process. It's the same process that we've always used to submit budget questions. But we will be, we will all receive the document of the follow-up notes for today. So Ms. Corbett-Sanders, maybe you and, well, you and whoever the next two people are can decide if you want to, you know, go through both agenda items. And, because I know some people, we have a hard stop at five. Maybe we can get through two things. But with that, this agenda item is closed, and we will take a three to five-minute break.